Okay, everybody, it is 6:32 and we will call the City Council Work Session to order. We only have one item on our agenda tonight that is the Parks from Recreation Sales Tax Renewal Discussion. This meeting is being held in person and in consideration of COVID-19 social distancing, this meeting is also available virtually via Zoom. Information is posted prior to the meeting on how to join at missionks.org/calender. With that, Laura, and I think we have Penn online, take it away.
Thank you and good evening. We had planned for our second of our two work sessions kind of leading up to some final decisions surrounding the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Renewal Rate. We held our first work session on April 27th. We covered a lot of the background and history of the sales tax, how it's been used over the last 10 years, kind of a potential look at the wants and needs and their associated costs anticipated in the next 10-year period. And then as we moved out of that April 27th work session, we were looking to go into a Parks Conceptual Open House Meeting that was scheduled for May 12th, in which we were going to set out all of the park conceptual plans that have been in progress over the last 12 to 18 months. I think you'll recall that most of those were presented in more individualized stakeholder or neighborhood type meetings, and we wanted to be able to present the community with that more comprehensive look at the outdoor park improvements that were anticipated. That meeting was to be followed by a presentation to the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, similar to the information that you all received at the April 27th work session, so that they could make a formal recommendation back to you in terms of the sales tax rate in particular. So this evening, there's not really a lot of new information that I have to cover or present. We do have a little bit of information that we can share. I know on the open house from May 12th, I know the mayor was able to be there. Councilmember Chozy, Councilmember Inman, Councilmember Loudon were there and so can certainly add some commentary and flavor to that. And then we'll share a little bit. Included in the packet was where the comments that were collected through that open house process. And then we've got a little bit of information on the recommendation from the PRT Commission, as well as on the 27th. One of the things that we had talked about was I had provided a sales tax comparison chart, looking at Mission's sales tax rate and that in surrounding communities. And part of that discussion was, for example, it's somewhat, I think, more appropriate to look at the highest sales tax rate collected in certain communities, particularly when we compare ourselves to a Prairie Village, for example, because in those shopping areas where the sales tax rate is higher, that's often the case. So that that chart was updated and we'll touch on that. And then the other thing that we've had information or that has transpired since the last time we met on April 27th was that Governor Kelly did sign into law the reduction over a three-year period of that sales tax on food. And so just kind of wanted to touch on the fact that potentially at the time that the new Parks and Recreation Sales Tax would take effect, the state's sales tax rate, at least on the purchase of food, would be reduced by two and a half percent and then eventually transitioning to zero. So with that, we'll just kind of launch into, if it's okay with everybody, the feedback from the Parks Conceptual Open House Meeting. On May 12th, we posted that information on the city's website, social media. We mailed about 135 flyers to the neighborhoods, particularly surrounding the parks. Many of those people had been invited to and participated in the stakeholder groups and the neighborhood meetings. We also distributed the invitation through our contact email list. We had, we think, we're estimating a total of about 55 participants over the course of the hour and a half that the open house was held. We did have one resident who showed up about 30 minutes early. So but I think that would be interested in feedback from those of you who were able to attend. From a staff perspective, we felt like it was well-attended and that the conversations were productive and very positive. So don't know if there's anybody else that has anything, thoughts, comments. I think, I don't think we heard anything that was of particular surprise through that process, a lot of feedback on location, particularly for the dog park and some of the other amenities and some of the individual parks. As mentioned, we kind of tried to summarize in this memo, the most common topics that were discussed, just general excitement for the amenities that are moving forward in Mohawk. Still some conversation around the parking concerns and the ADA access there at the park in Broadmoor Park, a lot of comments about that not being the preferred location for a dog park. And also some conversations around moving forward to fix the walking trail and bridge, which I know we hear of frequently as being a safety concern in that park, in Streamway, looking at that and exploring the option for building the dog park there. Also just some feedback for keeping that park as natural as we possibly can. And then in Water Works, really looking to synchronize the improvements with the Russian elementary construction and then providing more shade, which is a challenge in that park, as we know, just because of the underground storage tanks that we'll always have to work around. I don't know, we're working, I didn't get it done in time for tonight's work session, but one of the things that Confluence, as they compiled those comments, and particularly the post-it note comments, Penn and I are going to work our way back through and just sort of compile like comments together so that we can get a better sense of, instead of having to go through the notes and count them like I was doing before this packet went out, just trying to provide a more comprehensive summary of all of that. Next, in the memo for tonight's work session was the sales tax rate comparison and the state's sales tax exemption. As I mentioned, I did provide some updated tables on page three of the work session memo. And again, I do think that in every community, there is a higher sales tax rate in most instances, including in Mission. I think, though, as you look at and you break down the areas in which those higher sales tax rates apply, so for Mission, that highest sales tax rate currently is only within, well, no, it's within the Gateway and it's also within the Mission Crossing Development, which is the Culver's and Chick-fil-A there and those small businesses in the Strip Center. Excuse me, there, but primarily the Gateway site in which you would be looking at the purchase of really, assuming things are built out in the future, entertainment and/or restaurants, and not a lot of big-ticket items that would be purchased within either one of those districts where a CID has been established. And then I just did a quick breakdown of a comparison of the current rate and then effective January 2023, with the two and a half percent rollback on the state's sales tax on food purchases. And then ultimately, that would go down to an overall rate by January of 2025 of 5.225%, assuming no other changes. So I'll stop there for a minute, and if there's any discussion, comments, questions on anything in the packet up to that, this point.
So Laura, hypothetically, if somebody were to ask for a 2% sales tax district, would that put us another percentage point higher than this maximum?
Yes.
And then what's our lid for sales tax? Do you know what our maximum is?
The maximum that we can, we can have as a city is 3% overall.
Okay.
So 2% in a general sales tax and no, 1% in general sales tax, 2% in special sales taxes. So we aren't yet at our capacity, but neither is anybody else. And then the capacity on a community improvement district, is it anywhere between 0 and 2%?
Yeah, I'm just doing the math in my head, thinking so street sales tax, park sales tax, and that 2% CID would be getting close, wouldn't it?
Well, the CID doesn't count.
The CID doesn't count. No, that's not, that doesn't count towards our sales tax capacity as the city of Mission.
Okay.
That is, because that is something that is voted on specifically by the property owners within that specific established district and doesn't impact all of the residents of our community. Well, not, it does, not if they are shopping within that district, but.
And Laura, can you give a refresher on how the special sales tax also doesn't get tied up and the incentive?
So currently, that is, and it's all, sorry, all really negotiable. But in previous iterations of development agreements, if there has been a dedicated sales tax that is collected in the community, that is not subject to, it's not been made subject to any incentives that have been negotiated as a part of a development. So provides the opportunity for additional revenue streams in the street and parks categories in the future. And it can be on a significant development. I mean, it's been significant revenue. And we can certainly look at, you know, those kinds of, kinds of estimates. Okay. As I mentioned, then, we took, Penn and I made a presentation on May 16th to the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, again, spent oh, probably close to an hour walking through and just recapping kind of history and experience and shared some of the discussion and perspectives that the council had offered during your April 27th work session, and have specifically noting that there had been some conversation about, you know, the rate and potentially rolling back the sales tax rate from a 3.8 cent to a quarter cent to keep the overall tax rate consistent with what it had been prior to the street sales tax renewal. The PRT Commission acknowledged the basis for the council's discussion around a potential rollback of that, but also expressed their concern that while we might have some challenges in seeking renewal of the sales tax in an environment where inflation is increasing, they felt that that inflationary concern was also likely to impact the cost of improvements. And whatever dollars we might raise might also not stretch as far. And so they did feel unanimously that primarily based on the fact that their preference is to continue that focus on the outdoor park improvements very aggressively. That the recommendation from them to the council is that the council proceed with the ballot language for renewal at that 3.8 cent rate and that the ballot language be written broadly enough, as it was in 2012, to provide the greatest degree of flexibility. Just kind of the last piece that I would touch on is just the, you know, the difference. It's about a $300,000 a year difference in sales tax collections, a quarter cent versus a 3/8 of a cent. The other thing that I would share, as I know we have several council members who are unable to join us, Councilmember Boltinghouse had provided some comments to me in advance. Shuffle them, there they are, and asked, did those be read this evening and shared with the rest of you in attendance, and then we'll make those a part of the record. But so Councilmember Boltinghouse says, "With my absence next Wednesday, I would like to submit a couple of written comments for the sales tax rate discussion. Hopefully, that can be shared in the meeting." He indicates, "I am in favor of the 3.8 cent rate, like the Parks and Recreation and Tree Commission recommends. I believe the extra revenue will directly improve residents' quality of life and help us meet the overwhelming expectation from the resident survey that Mission's parks are preserved and improved. This year, especially when I have visited our parks, especially Waterworks, Streamway and Broadmoor, I have found them to be pleasant oases that dramatically improve my mental and physical health. It makes me happy to usually see other families, kids and neighbors enjoying the spaces too. Rarely do we have, excuse me, rarely do we have a chance to also make such a significant improvement in the lives of our residents without having to place the burden of the ask squarely on their shoulders. Indeed, nearly 40% of the sales tax generated would come from non-residents, but our residents would receive 100% of the benefits of this investment. While I'm sympathetic to arguments on inflation and protecting residents' hard-earned money, it is ultimately my belief that now is the time to continue to ensure we put our parks in a position to meet the demands of our growing community for the next decade. For all of these reasons, I will be supporting the 3.8, at the 3.8 cent rate." So with that, Mayor, I don't know if we want to just kind of open it up to a more general. I don't have a lot more, as I said, data or facts to present. Kind of, they've kind of been put out there on the table over the last 12 to 18 months, but certainly happy to answer other questions or anything else that was included in the packet that we haven't touched on.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, I mean, probably everyone else did the math too, but if you're looking at the difference between the quarter cent and the 3.8 cent, it is, you know, real dollars over time, especially over the life of the sales tax. Sorry, I'm getting feedback. We'll wait for Chief. But over the life of the sales tax, you know, sort of to Trent's point about what can we get done, you are looking at 3.35 million more sales tax dollars, you know, 40% of which is the bill's footed by non-Mission residents that we can put towards our park. So if we do the 3.8 cents instead of the quarter cent, and I think, you know, that's real dollars. You know, we're looking at the biggest price tag for Mohawk Park, since we haven't done anything in that park, and that's essentially, you know, really close to the entire budget for Mohawk. So I think, to me, for a lot of the reasons that Trent pointed out, that 3.8 cents tax makes a lot of sense, especially given, you know, the concern with the rate of taxes on food and with that being resolved by the state legislature, at least over time, I feel comfortable with the 3.8 cent rate.
Yeah, I would agree. Laura, I think you shared the actual amount every year that the food tax, like, once it's completely gone, it's about a million dollars a year, right? That we would, but not all of it, I guess, goes towards parks, so. Okay, okay.
So I think one of the things that we were talking about was just a concern that there would not be pressure applied in the future for state, for the cities to reduce our portion of sales tax on food, that that response, if that's the decision the state wanted to make, obviously, they carry at six and a half percent the lion's share of the sales tax rate anyway. But one of the things that we were talking about is if, if that were to happen and there were to be some future legislative change, obviously, we would have time to react and respond to that. But that would be about a million-dollar hole to plug in our general fund budget, the revenues that are generated from grocery sales in general in the community.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, so, I mean, I think he was Warren, if I'm not mistaken, who brought this up during the PRT, the inflation piece, like, yes, we're seeing inflation for residents, but also that means, like you said, Laura, inflation on actual building supplies for all of these parks. So it's important to kind of compare those two and know that, yeah, our dollars just aren't going as far anymore in order to make these parks what they need to be in terms of, like, I mean, you've heard me talk about safety a lot, but, I mean, Broadmoor's Trail needs to be looked at. There's all sorts of other pieces in the parks that need to be looked at. I'm also in favor of 3.8s. And yeah, I think, I think this is, this is what the residents want. They've shown that through surveys and various other pieces. I mean, having a turnout of 55 people at a park design, I mean, that's a huge, that's a big turnout. I mean, people really care about these parks in this, in the city, so, yeah, that's where I stand.
I too agree with the, you know, maintaining the 3.8s sales tax, because we're not adding, we're maintaining the level where it is now with this particular tax. I know we increased with the streets tax. But we have seen with the Direction Finder that our citizens do enjoy and use parks, and it is a priority to them. The dog park is still, you know, an issue that much, many, many people are interested in pursuing, and I think without this, it wouldn't really be feasible. I, you know, four kids, I've lived practically at Waterworks Park, still go there with my dog. And so I know that they get used by many, many families, and it seems like we have more younger families moving into Mission. And so park spaces are really important for, you know, getting kids out and getting some exercises, the fresh air and some vitamin D. I think it's just, you know, a part of our, part of our culture. And there are lots of things that need to be improved. I just sent Penn an email with, you know, pictures of the sidewalk as you go into Waterworks Park that is just so cracked and destroyed, and especially if there's leaves or snow and kids walk that to and from school. There's a sign that kind of has leaned to the left that my husband almost sits his head on if he's not paying attention. So, yeah, there's, there's little bits and pieces that need to be updated, maintained in all of our parks. And if we're going to keep, if we want to improve what we have, then we, you know, probably need to maintain this, this sales tax.
I like that maintain or renewal, like, kind of language is, I think, important. Like, we're renewing what was already there. I think that was something that was brought up in PRT as well. So maintaining or renewal is kind of.
Yeah, we're not asking to build a lot of new parks. We're just really wanting to maintain what we have and make it as nice as we can.
All right, any further discussion or anything you wanted to add, Laura?
I think one of the things that we haven't talked about it specifically, but, you know, as I was going back this afternoon and kind of just reviewing the ballot language from 2012, it also talks about acquisition. And so I know one of the things that the council has talked about in the past is we do have limited opportunities for new parkland acquisition, but this is a resource that could potentially be available for that if we identified some parcels or areas where we wanted to approach that. So you would have that flexibility. Again.
Well, and there's even some, it's space that we already own that could be maybe turned.
Converted to parkland.
Yeah, you know, I can think of a couple of different spaces that are just empty, waiting for something to happen. And then we've got, you know, property all along Rock Creek that is just deteriorating, that, you know, maybe at some point, we could do something with besides watch it grow weeds.
Yeah, and I would agree with the PRT recommendation on the flexibility piece as well as the rate. I think that makes a lot of sense, and you raised a good point with the acquisition piece as well. But, yeah, keeping that flexible language, you know, it's always historically been used primarily for those capital improvements, but giving us the flexibility, you know, who knows what things will look like in the next decade. I think that's a good idea.
Well, and I know that, you know, Parks and Recreation also tends to be an area where, you know, right now, we're seeing a really big push of federal investment in infrastructure. Parks and Recreation, I would say, has been one of the most consistent areas over time, even with the ebb and flow and some of the other federal dollars toward infrastructure where grant opportunities are available and having the resources for matching funds. Working on agenda items for our committee meeting next week, and one of those is, Penn will be bringing forward the conversation about whether or not we should pursue a second round of land and water conservation grant funding for Mohawk Park. And then also as a part of Mohawk, as we went through those stakeholder meetings, there was some significant neighborhood interest in fundraising, particularly for the inclusive playground structure. So I think there are a lot of opportunities. We've talked about it in relationship to the dog park in looking at funding partnerships or, you know, fundraising opportunities to help supplement city revenues as well. But anytime we can make sure that we have matching dollars to bring to the table for those kinds of projects, I think it's important as well.
Yeah, and Laura, that reminded me of another point where, that we've talked about before, but maybe not, not with all of our newest members, is that if you're looking at, you know, the potential for bond scenarios, and the bond underwriters want to see a dedicated, you know, stream for the life of the bond, where you have, know you have funds to be able to pay it back. So I think that that's another good argument for keeping the rate where it is. Anything else, or Laura, you're wanting a recommendation for what to take into committee?
I think just some general, you know, consensus so that we know, because what would, what you would typically see in the scenario next week on your Finance and Administration Committee Agenda is the resolution establishing the ballot language that's prepared by Gilmore and Bell. So again, we can go into that with a recommended rate. We can go into that with a rate line that's blank and everything else sort of filled out. But that, that would be, and then, so you would look at it at committee on the first and then actually take the formal vote on that ballot language resolution at the legislative meeting on the 15th of June. And that keeps us on track for the September 20th mail ballot election.
I have a question for you. So, so what if we decide to go with the 3.8s sales tax and it fails? Would we have the chance to maybe try again with a lower rate, or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we could absolutely go back, you know, we could absolutely go back to the voters. And, you know, I think certainly if we, if it were to fail, we'd want to do some research about really trying to understand what caused the issue not to pass. If it were simply a concern over the rate, then we could, you know, try that again. What we would have is probably, I mean, we would have a lapse, because there's no way for us to time another election to not have a lapse in sales tax collection. And so I would imagine we would be, you know, back to the drawing board with the Election Commission to look at available dates in 2023, when we might take that, you know, when we might take that forward.
Thank you.
Laura, do you remember what the vote was on the street sales tax, the percentage, yes?
Last time?
Yeah.
I don't, but it's in the. It was 53.83%, yes.
That was on parks, what about?
Oh, on streets. On streets, I'm sorry, streets, it was 77%.
Okay, and the last time we did parks was 10 years ago.
Last time we did parks was 10 years ago.
And are we thinking of doing like a, basically a PR push like we did for streets?
So we would build, and I will tell you that the street, I don't have the numbers for street last time right in front of me, but the street sales tax 10 years ago, I, the margins for approval were much smaller for both streets and parks 10 years ago than what we saw on the street sales tax campaign this year or last year. And yes, our plan would be to. this year or last year. And yes, our plan would be to, I think we have, we saw success or obviously feel like we had success with kind of that campaign and PR plan. So it would be a combination of a website, social media, newsletter that's mailed to all of our households in the community. Potentially, one of the things we, I think we talked, I don't remember whether we talked about it in the April, we've done this road show several times. So I don't remember whether it was with you all before or with Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. One of the things that we didn't do with the street sales tax was kind of take it on the road to various maybe neighborhood groups. And that was primarily just because of COVID concerns. And so particularly, and I think it was maybe with the PRT, Mary's. And we talked about, you know, going into this in a summer and fall season, potentially even being able to have, and we had a town hall, two town hall meetings for the street sales tax that were woefully attended. And so, but we talked about going out and being able to be in a shelter house or be in a park, invite neighborhoods. I think we have some more flexibility to have more of that one-on-one contact with neighborhood groups, HOAs. Let's hope than we did in the fall of 2021.
Well, I think bringing the park sales tax discussion to the parks during peak season, it's, you know, fits right in, you know?
What about the mission market? Could we not, you know, maybe not every time, but have like a booth showing, you know, some of the things that we've done on doing for the parks?
PRT was all over being able to staff kind of an information.
Thankfully is pretty well connected in a lot of different neighborhoods. And so they're all over being sure that they really, you know, get out into different HOAs and have those conversations. One of my goals while I was still on PRT was to have a booth as often as we do at the mission market. And I think that that's something that they definitely want to carry through. I mean, they were really like towards the end, they're really brainstorming on all sorts of ways that they could get out into the community and and, you know, some of them have been through the parks sales tax, like the first time they did it. So they, they kind of know and what they're getting into and what they need to prepare themselves with. And I think we have a really good group of people who are willing to get out and make it well known. So.
And that was, thank you for saying that, Mary. That was one of the things we did talk about because with the reconstruction of the, of the outdoor aquatic facility being the main focus, the last time the Mission Marlins Swim Team was out knocking doors, they, there was a kind of a grassroots group that formed around that. But I think, you know, Anne O'Leary, who's the chairperson of the PRT and Mark Ratazina, we're talking about, you know, it is possible with this grassroots effort, they had signs printed, save our pool. That there's not necessarily that really clearly identifiable user group or beneficiary of this one. I think it's much, you know, much broader in terms of the outdoor park improvements, but I think engaging people in that process could be, could be really effective.
I think putting the, you know, putting the master planning stuff out there for folks is, I think that's going to connect in a similar, if not stronger way, because it's in people's neighborhoods. So.
That's what I was going to ask. There's kind of bulletin boards, at least there is at Waterworks. Could we not like put little posters of here's what we're hoping to do?
Jackie's on that too.
Jackie Gamison is on the information kiosks at the parks.
Yeah. So that, and then, you know, I mean, they were even already tossing around kind of slogans that they'd like to use for this, you know, type, like what, what they want, like signs to say. And so they're like, they're on top of it. So it got me excited to hear them so excited about making sure that this goes through and, you know, yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, I'm, I definitely, I think we've said this before in at least committee, but I certainly would be interested in seeing what our options are in terms of debt or, you know, increasing that cash flow velocity to, you know, that the ask here is that we put the sales tax in place and deliver on the, what we're being told in the direction finder survey. So can we start delivering quickly? Would be nice. I don't think it's critical, but it would be nice.
Right.
We've got the tennis courts, the pickleball courts that will be open and ready to go soon. So I mean, we are kind of.
Yeah. So I think one of the things we've talked about, you know, the tennis courts, yes, if it will stop raining this week, we'll be ready to have that ribbon cutting next week. But if you've driven past, if you haven't driven past, please do, because the color is on and it is just, oh, it's like the birds are singing, you know, you drive past and the skies open up or something. I don't know. It's fantastic after seeing it. And the condition that it's been in for years. And then tomorrow we do have a bid opening for the Mohawk Park improvements. And so that will be coming forward, which will also give us, I think, an interesting picture about what we can expect, at least in the shorter term, with respect to construction costs for these improvements. So that will be coming, that contract will be coming forward next week at your Community Development Committee meeting. And so we would have both with a groundbreaking in August. So that I think could generate some excitement. And then we've talked about, is there another improvement? Penn's not elevated a panelist status, so I'll put him on the spot a little bit, but we've, we've talked about what other improvement, because we do have some availability of fund balance in the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. So is there another improvement in one of the other parks that we could undertake in this short period of time? We don't have the time, nor are we in a position with overall park design to replace a playground structure, for example. Just the supply chain requirements and the, or in lead time on that is, is, would put us well past a renewal. But one of the things that we have talked about is can we move forward with a redo of the Broadmoor Park Trail? Because if you look at that conceptual park plan, that trail isn't changing really its location or configuration. We know we have concerns and we think it would be something that we could potentially, so we're in the process of researching whether or not we could bring that forward to you all here and in the budget discussions or the coming months, because I think it's important to make that investment in as many of the outdoor parks as we can. And I.
That would be truly.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that, you know, what we've heard, I mean, we've heard a lot of things in Broadmoor Park and a lot of sort of narrative about, don't change anything, just leave it exact, you know, exactly the way that it is. But I think that as Penn and I have brainstormed in the last month or so, I think that's something that's realistic, could realistically be accomplished and be another you know, positive affirmation for the community that we're serious about this and we're looking at investments that align with the priorities that we're hearing from them. Penn, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, since I already semi-committed us.
Yeah, I appreciate the commitment. We have been discussing that particular section of trail on the eastern edge and south southeastern corner in particular at length, just because of the safety considerations. And yeah, I believe if we wanted to move on something, that'd probably be the, the project that moves the needle the most, gives us the best impact in the shortest amount of time and removes a safety concern from off of our park.
Think the short of Penn's comment was good plan.
Yes.
All right. I mean, I would, I would feel comfortable seeing a, this go on our committee agenda with the 3 eights and, and the flexible, continuing the flexible use language sort of based on this discussion tonight, but see not some, see some nodding.
Yep. Second, I would second. You third.
I'll do a little cheer if you want me to.
Yeah. Yes. And I know our local state delegation was harping on the food sales tax sort of throughout the session. So thanks to them and the rest of the Kansas Legislature for, for getting that done.
Okay. Well, then I don't have anything else. And I'm sure no one really wants to stay here any longer than they have to this evening. But I appreciate your time. We'll, we'll move forward to have that prepared. Again, we'll have the opportunity to discuss that next week at Finance and Admin Committee. And I did leave calendars at your place. I don't need them back. If you have them tonight, great. If not, if you can get them back to me as soon as possible, that would be great. We're all just busy and trying to plug, plug in dates. So, thank you.
Yep. And keeping your Wednesdays free in the meantime, while Laura correlates all this. Coalesces, coalesces, there we go. All right. Thank you, everyone. With no further business, that ends our work session.